Great. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and the school districts operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the publish agenda or other matters of interest to them. The board reserves a right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act and JSA ten four six at sequentia, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk, Princeton Packet and the Trenton Times on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-three and revised on August tenth, two thousand twenty-three. It was distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The board reserves a right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy one sixty-eight recording devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time as noted in the agenda or added by the presiding officer shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon, the number of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The representative sending district is authorized on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA eighteen eight thirty-eight eight point one. In the event this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions referred to high school, central administrative and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you please call the roll?
Daphne Kendall?
Here.
Letty Baglia?
Here.
Beth Baron?
Here.
Abby Bronfeld?
Here.
Dean Durbin?
Present.
Mara Franceschi?
Here.
Susan Kanther?
Here.
Brian McDonald?
Present.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Can I now get an adopt, a motion for adoption of the minutes for July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three? Brian, second. Michelle?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Letty Baglia?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Abby Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dean Durbin?
Epstein.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Susan Kanther?
Yeah.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. All right. Well, welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. Thank you to all the administrators who interrupted one of the last summer evenings to join us. Even though school's been out for two months, um, the district has been busy preparing for the upcoming school year. Just yesterday, we welcomed new staff to new staff orientation, which is a five-day process. Next week, convocation takes place and school begins two weeks from today. So thank you everyone for joining us today. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Kelly for the superintendent comment.
Thank you, Board President Kendall. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see all of the audience that's on the line for the August twenty-second superintendent's report. It's a little tiny bit lengthy, but that's because there has been a lot of great work happening in district this summer in preparation for opening day for students. First, I'd like to give everyone an update on our strategic plan. One of the key elements in the strategic plan, which is called Forward Focus twenty twenty-eight, is the portrait of a graduate. The Portrait of Graduate, or P O G, why not have an acronym that's new, is the community's articulation of the qualities and attributes of a high school graduate, Princeton High School graduate, expressing what a Princeton Public Schools graduate needs to know, be able to do, and embody. Thanks to the efforts of our interdisciplinary and multi-grade instructional team who kicked off its launch meeting in August, we are off to a great start in answering a key question. How do we assess students on what our community values? The team met and discussed K through twelve skill progressions, how we can intentionally teach, access, and provide feedback to students and families about the skills we collectively value, and the importance of metacognition, which is thinking about our thinking and self-reflection for our learners. This interdisciplinary and multi-grade team will continue to meet throughout the year to plan professional development for staff with the goal of incorporating this work into staff and school goals and adult learning plans. Another key element of our strategic plan are our annual priorities and key actions associated with the goals, measures, and strategic priorities outlined in the five-year plan. The draft of our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Collective Action Plan or our annual district-level priorities for this upcoming school year will be shared with the Board of Ed and public sometime in September. Once approved, we plan to post on our website along with give frequent updates on our progress. Please expect to hear further details on the date and time for this conversation early next month. The second topic on tonight's superintendent's report is an update on the back-to-school community chats, which I held in August. Our theme for this upcoming school year is belonging and community where every learner thrives. So I was pleased to conduct back-to-school chats in August. I would like to publicly thank the Y W C A, House of Cupcakes, and M T for allowing these chats to take place in their establishments. The chats were intentionally organized to be small gatherings for casual community conversations centered on this year's themes. Each participant introduced themselves. They shared a quote about belonging or community which resonated with them. We've read excerpt from Margaret Wheatley called Turn to Each Other. We've reviewed an infographic on the importance of student belonging for high student achievement. And of course, they've received a one-pager giving all the information they ever would want to know about our new strategic plan. The majority of our time together, however, was just an informal Q and A session as a group where individuals were able to ask me any questions that they wanted. Due to the success of these chats, I do plan to host several more. Additionally, I will be announcing the dates and times for my office hours at Princeton Public Library for the upcoming school year. Our third topic on tonight's report is a back-to-school update. As we know, all of our students are scheduled to return to school on Tuesday, September fifth. By Tuesday, August twenty-ninth, all of our staff will be back on our campuses making those final preparations to receive our students. I would like to publicly thank our maintenance team, our custodians, our office staff, both in our schools and at Valley Road, our register, our transportation department, and every single staff member who've worked diligently over the summer to make sure we could welcome both our staff and our students for a smooth opening of schools. And finally, in terms of the PHA principal search update, as you recall, the Princeton High School principal position was posted on July tenth. We've received applications from both internal and external candidates over a period of three weeks. To date, all applications have been carefully screened, and the next phase is to bring the candidates in for interviews with the full search committee. The full search committee is comprised of more than twenty stakeholders, including employees, parents, and Board of Education observers. Due to the availability of search committee members, interviews have been scheduled to take place in late August. At that time, another update will be provided to our community. Thank you very much for your patience as we work to identify the most qualified candidate for this position. That concludes the superintendent's report for August twenty-second. I'm going to turn the mic back over to our board president.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Kelly. Um, it also says that we have a testing, NJ GPA and access testing results. I'm guess why our administrators have joined us this late summer evening, but it's always glad to see you.
Thank you.
So is that with Dr. Chu, or should I turn that back over to you?
Yes, we're going to actually turn that over to Dr. Chu and our curriculum and instruction team. We have supervisors for both humanities and mathematics and our supervisor of world language. So, Dr. Chu, I will turn the mic over to you.
And could we just, because you know, the community's turning over and everyone might not know who's who, could we just introduce? And we have some new faces. Could we just introduce our supervisors that are gathered here today, please?
I'll happily do that. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And I apologize in advance. I've been sitting here and had closed sessions for almost two hours, and now my cat decides to come over to the screen. So, you know, attention seeking. So if you see a cat head, I apologize. So, welcome, everyone. We're very excited to share our New Jersey graduation proficiency assessment results with the community tonight, as well as our access testing for our multilingual learners' results tonight. So let me introduce the team that's going to be presenting that with me. First and foremost, we have Keisha Smith Carrington. She's our supervisor of humanities in grade six through twelve. So she's going to be helping us talk about E L A results. Our new supervisor of math and business education, six to twelve, is Tiffany Brennan. So you give a little wave, Tiffany. Thank you. Welcome, joining us. So this is her first formal presentation with Princeton Public Schools. She's been here for three weeks and has hit the ground running. And then finally, we have Priscilla Russell, our supervisor of world language, bilingual education, and ESL, and dual language immersion. And she'll be here to help talk with our results. I do want to do one clarification. The state code change, our English language learners are no longer called English language learners. They're called multilingual learners. It's more of an asset-based approach. We're adding language, right? Where it's so it's not a deficit model anymore. So you might hear myself catch myself, hear me catch myself, I should say, and using the old term. So it's phasing over. And that's the school districts will now be using multilingual learners. So let's get started. We have some great news to share with everyone. And I do want to point out that we do not have our NJ SLA spring data yet from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We have some preliminary results, but we do not have the the final results that are embargoed. We should be having and receiving those in a few weeks, and then those individual student score reports will be sent out to families, just like they always are, and you will have online portal access. And then we have sixty days to present to the board and the community those testing results. So you will receive that presentation probably in October, as well as our A P scores, S A T scores, and A C T scores. Right, so let's begin. Alright, so what is the NJ GPA? So this is the first year that this graduation proficiency assessment counted. So this is the new assessment that took place of HESBA, that took place of H S P T, for those of you back in the day. So this is the new graduation benchmark assessment, and it is administered to all grade eleven students. Students cannot refuse to take this assessment. They have to sit in order to even be considered to graduate. It's designed to measure E L A and mathematics standards. There is a separate science assessment as well when they're in twelfth grade or in junior year. It depends on the timeline for the graduation requirements. And that does not count to our graduation, but that is another federal assessment that we are required to give. So what we look at is that the E L A component measures grade ten standards for E L A in New Jersey. And then the mathematics is a combination of Algebra I and geometry standards. So a lot of our students take those courses in middle school or in early high school. So it's very important that we spiral those standards in our upper-level math classes so that students have those concepts down and are ready to, you know, be successful on this assessment. So graduation requirement. So there is a cut score of seven twenty-five to pass the assessment. And if students do not pass the assessment, they have three options. They can retake the assessment, which will be this fall. In October, we'll have another window for students who have not passed the assessment yet. They can take the P S A T, S A T, did all different kinds of assessments instead of that, in lieu of that with a passing cut score and use that for their graduation proficiency. Or if they don't have a passing assessment score on any of those, then they can create a portfolio appeal. But they have to use those test scores first to see if they can pass with the test scores. And last but not least, they create a portfolio. They don't just submit any work to the state that is sort of teacher-directed, school-directed, and standards-aligned. And then we verify with the state that the students have demonstrated mastery with those content area standards in either math or E L A or both. We do have some students who might pass math and not E L A or E L A and not math. So it's important that we make sure that we are following their graduation requirements, not just with credits and attendance, but also with the NJ GPA assessment. Currently, we have about sixteen students who have not met passing yet. That is very key. It is only August. And I want to make sure that we say yet because we have another test administration in October. There are other assessments that they can take or they can complete a portfolio. It's our job to ensure that students are, first of all, achieving the standards, but also graduating on time with their cohort. So here are our scores for twenty-two, twenty-three. What you'll see is you have not passing and passing, and it compares our district to the state. It has E L A and it has math. So we had three hundred and fifty-five students take E L A and three hundred and fifty-four take the math assessment. What you'll see is great news. At the district level, we had ninety-three percent of students in E L A pass. So seven percent of our students did not pass, and those are the ones who would create a different assessment pathway or portfolio if that does not work out for them. So ninety-three percent of our students passed in E L A and eighty-five percent passed in mathematics, compared to the state's fifty-five percent and the state's eighty-one percent. So Princeton is far ahead of the curve for graduation assessment requirements because you see all results combined, the mean is sixty-eight percent, and we're at eighty-nine percent. Well, what does this look like compared to last year? So last year, our juniors at the time took the assessment. It was told it was mandated, and then after the fact, they said it didn't, wasn't required anymore. So we can kind of say with certainty that they tried their best because it was a graduation assessment at that time. And then we found out after the fact that it was no longer required for graduation. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had twenty percent of our students not passing mathematics, and we went up to only fifteen percent not passing, and twenty-six percent of our students not passing E L A, and that went to seven percent. So we've seen great growth. I always have to sort of indicate that these are two different cohorts, so you can't compare apples to apples. These are two different groups of students. However, as a school district, we always want to see trends of going more passing and less not passing. And so it's really important as we get used to this assessment because it is relatively new that our teachers know which standards our students need more support in and making sure our instruction and our curriculum align to that needed support so that students can be successful. Really quickly, for the state purposes, we have to report out the different subgroups and demographics of our assessments. So here we have by race, and you can see that our black and Hispanic students are not getting the most, they need more support than what we are currently providing them for passing. So you can see that forty-eight percent of our Hispanic students and forty percent of our black students have not passed the assessment of that junior year. You can see across the other board, we are in the nineties for other races. So what are we doing and what programming and supports are we providing our students and following their pathways? And what's nice about this assessment is a small enough cohort that we can track individual students and look at their math pathways and look at their English pathways and help sort of decide, well, how can we get them back on track for graduation? And how can we start this conversation not in eleventh grade or twelfth grade, but in ninth grade? And that is one of the goals in our strategic plan, is making sure that we're looking at students and providing them needed interventions early on and often. When you look at gender, you can see that ninety-two percent of our females and eighty-seven percent of our males have passed the assessment, so slightly more females than males. And then when you look at our different subgroup programs, so F R lunch is our students who are under resource, who receive federal assistance with lunch. So they're at a fifty-fifty split, this grouping. Our section five oh four students are doing remarkably well. Those are the students who might have accommodations for extended test time. Our English language learners, as you can see, this did not convert over yet to multilingual learners. This is a group that, and when we talk about our access scores, Ms. Russell will share more about how we're supporting our multilingual learners. Our special ed students as well, fifty-nine percent passed the assessment, but forty-one percent did not. And then our general education students, ninety-four percent passed the assessment. This data trends with data that we have with every other assessment, our NJ SLA data. When we look across about who's participating in our A P classes, et cetera. So it's sort of, you know, it can, it confirms sort of these trends that we keep seeing. And so ultimately is, what is the district going to do about it, right? Because it impacts the daily instruction and the supports that we provide all students. And so I think when we talk about tiered supports in the classroom, small group instruction, creating different services like Math Lab or Plus Classes to help support students within the school day, we need to do a better job to ensure that we are reaching all learners. So next steps, I'm going to start this slide, and then I'm going to have Tiffany and Keisha step in sort of about specifics about their departments. So I'm going to hit the first bullet, and I'll let them highlight the second. We're, we really need to take ownership as a team of administrators and staff is working with our counseling department, our ESL supervisor and student services to ensure that those students that I mentioned, those sixteen, have the success that they need to graduate. So meaning, you know, what are their alternative assessment scores if they're not passing during that October round of additional NJ GPA assessment or beginning the portfolio process? And once again, to me, it's not just about graduating. It's that they have this foundational support of Algebra I, geometry, and E L A content standards so that they can be successful post-high school, wherever they are and wherever they land. And then I'm going to have Tiffany go first to maybe talk a little bit about how the math department can work to support the students in these groups.
Absolutely. So we can see from our data that our algebra sections went a little bit better than our geometry sections. And frankly, it's not surprising. It's something we can work on for sure, but the algebra skills that they learn, whether they're learning them in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, or ninth grade, those algebra skills are reused over and over as the students progress through Algebra II, pre-calculus, calculus, and beyond. And they're used a lot in their science classes as well. So students tend not to be as rusty on those Algebra I skills. So what we need to work on as a department is really intentionally spiraling, like Dr. Chu mentioned earlier, but intentionally spiraling some of those geometry skills throughout their learning so that kids aren't as rusty when they see this assessment. Many of our students take geometry as, some as eighth graders, many as most as ninth graders, and they're not taking this test until spring of their junior year. So they've had a long time without maybe thinking about a lot of geometry. And so we're going to work hard to spiral those skills throughout and make sure we're doing some deliberate and concentrated review, not teaching to the test, but it doesn't hurt to do a little bit of review, especially for kind of a high-stakes test like this before that assessment comes in March. The other thing we're going to really focus on is the modeling and reasoning, and that means not just solving for X. That's what math teachers love and students too. Let me just get the right answer and call it a day. But we're going to really have a renewed focus on understanding the whys and the hows of math so that kids are, you know, this is part of the assessment. It's not like our, our old S A Ts where we just fill in the bubble. The answer is five. Kids are asked to explain their thinking here. It's not just a strictly multiple choice test. And so we need to be more deliberate in that regard too. So we've got some visual reminders of posters of these eight mathematical practices, working on getting printed and laminated to be hung in classrooms as reminders for teachers and for kids, you know, about some of those other softer math skills.
Thank you, Tiffany. Okay. And then, Keisha, did you mind sharing some things about the E L A?
And so one of the major changes for us in high school E L A this year will be to extend Common Lit, which we've been using in the middle grades into high school. Currently, we don't have data other than grades that we can use from year to year to make sure that our students are developing the skills that they need. And so what we've done as an action step is begin to, this year, have that assessment. So this way, we will have data and we will be able as educators to come together and look at specific skills that the students may need additional support in. One of the strengths of having those data will be that it will also help on the social study side. Because of course, for the first two years, the students are primarily in the same courses. It's not until their junior year where we have students begin on the English side to take many different, not many, they either take A P or they take English eleven, but still, they're not all necessarily learning the same thing. And then on the social studies side, it really happens in the beginning in grade ten when we have a push. But because it's still U S history, it's really in that, again, third year in high school when students are beginning to have many different options on the social study side. So having common data that we can look at will help to make sure that whether they're looking at nonfiction texts in social studies or whether they're looking at nonfiction and fiction in their E L A classes, they will be able to, as teachers, prepare lessons that are making sure to develop any of the areas that we see in the data will strengthen all of our students and especially homing in on the skills that the students who are identified in our middle school data for our rising ninth grade NJ SLA data that we'll be looking at, looking at those skills and making sure we're strengthening those starting from ninth grade. Another thing that we'll be doing is working to make sure that our English plus class, again, starting in ninth grade, is using the data that comes up from eighth grade. So from the beginning, we're making sure to catch the students who we know are in need of additional support. So starting with ninth grade and then moving forward, we'll be able to really strengthen our department when it comes to meeting the needs of students. Going to our students who are specifically identified in this year's or the data we received from last year that we can use for this year's NJ GPA data, we'll be able to make sure that those students who have been identified are getting the support they need, not only in English plus, but also in supporting the teachers in whose English classes they sit with making sure that the lessons are addressing the needs that those students have. So those will be some of the data-specific things that we'll be doing. In addition to that, we will be continuing our work to continue to develop our understanding of culturally responsive and sustaining practices and pedagogies when it comes to the ways that we're designing our lessons, the ways that we're revising our curriculum in E L A in particular that will really become important because this year we'll be looking at the new standards once they're adopted. Again, that won't address this year's class, but we are always planning forward. And so those are some of the steps that we'll be taking this year.
Thank you, Keisha. So now we're going to shift to the access assessment for multilingual learners. So, Priscilla, you want to go ahead and take on?
Okay. Something that happens in about six weeks in the early spring when we can administer the access, and it's mostly online now. Kindergarten and first and second grade have some paper and pencil, but the rest of it is is on computers, so we get very good support from the tech department. Kim's already talked about the new term multilingual learners, and I must admit, when I think about multilingual students, most people, most students in the Princeton Public Schools are multilingual because of the, the language classes that we start in second grade or first grade. So I, I, I do think the term English language learner is more descriptive, but we're all, we'll all learn just saying multilingual learners very soon. So the results from this test arrived the day before school ended. And I must say that the teachers did a yeoman's work in reviewing all the tests, getting placement set for the coming years, that's coming years, specifically at the high school and the middle school. There's a lot that has to be done right away. So the access is a test in four skills. To exit from ESL, one needs to earn a four-point-five of a six-point scale, and then teachers use multiple measures to decide, well, does this child is really ready to exit? Or do we keep an eye on them for another year, keep them in ESL? So there's, there's a lot of qualitative discussion that goes on also, not just the, the data. But Kim, do you want to push some buttons? Yeah. So there are a few slides. This is death by data here. And, you know, I don't know, just why don't you go through the district and then, so these, these pretty colored ones. Let's just take the far right.
Priscilla, I believe frozen.
Priscilla, you froze a little bit. Did you go back like a minute?
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, let's look at the bars on the, the graph on the right. Did I, did you hear me say that? And then there are six colors there. So the, on the far left, that's level one, that's really beginning. And then the last two, our cat's acting up now. The last two bars are level five and six. And you wonder, well, why are there so few sixes and why is five so low? And that's because if you look at the fourth bar, that's where kids can exit. So if they have a four point five, then they're, you know, they're not going to have a five. They're not going to stay and have a six. But I, I thought you might be interested in, in why it looks like that. Okay. Oh yeah, here's more. Why don't you just go? These are just by, yeah, by schools.
So let, let me just interrupt for a second. So for those in the audience who really want to dive into the data, as Priscilla was sort of sharing, this will be posted on our district website tomorrow under our curriculum tab. By state code, we have to share each individual schools, school, well, if we have four elementary schools, you have to show each elementary school and then your middle and your high, because we only have one per building span level. So basically this is all the same data, but then broken up by each elementary school and then by grade level. And if there are less than 10 students who are in a grade, it is suppressed for privacy reasons. That is state guidance based on that. So I'll flip through these quickly, Priscilla.
Yeah, yeah. And most of our grades have fewer than 10 students. So that's why you see all these empty spaces. Yeah. So just flip through. Oh, you got through already? So, um, yes. Again, here are more graphs. You saw them last year. They're all by percentages. And I think I may have mentioned or may not have mentioned that students are required to take the access. It doesn't matter if they arrive the day before the window of testing closes. And so one year I thought I would use good judgment and say, this child has just arrived from from Guatemala, has never had a computer before, knows no English, so he's not going to sit for the access. And I got my hand a little slapped by the state saying, no, they have to sit. So that's why you'll see this level one. These are often kids who just arrived here in the schools and everybody is taking the test. So. Yeah. Just different groups. And again, I love these colored bars. Like they're pretty descriptive. Okay. Do you want to go to?
So yeah, so this, so we have the subgroups and we look at under resource students, free federal assistant for lunch. So that's the free and reduced lunch section. And then we have special ed. We do not have five oh four reporting here because we had less than 10 students across the district to have five oh fours, who are also multilingual learners. So that data is suppressed as well as the other subgroup category is special education. That would not be, we don't, I'm not sorry, not special education, E S L. They receive E S L. So that's not a subgroup here. So that's why there's, it's a much smaller option. There's fewer options on this graph here.
Yeah. Last year I think we did have a five oh four student. So that graph was one very tall bar and it was just that student. So where, what are our areas of strength? Small group instruction and classes range from maybe three children up to 10 in the elementary schools and middle school and high school. Maybe from five students up to 12 or 13. With very strong co-teaching in language arts in the middle school. That's been going on for several years now. It's, it's very, it's pretty to watch and to see our children grow in that setting. At the high school, we have strong administrative support. I've been so fortunate, maybe the last five years to have had all this support at the high school and we've been able to expand our offerings. It's, it's really very exciting, all that we can offer at the high school. And then also this past year, we had 38 more staff members complete sheltered English instruction training, which is a 15 hour online slog, pretty much. It's, it's pretty heavy, but very good and free. And we have one of our staff members, Jennifer Lennon, who hand holds, holds by hand all people going through the S E I training. So we're, we're hoping to continue that next year. Sort of depends on whether Stockton State offers the testing free again. But they've come through every year. So in areas for growth, we need more support for our Ls or M Ls at the middle school. Need quite a bit more support there. And we would like to increase the out of school supports for our English language learners. We, we do that on a small basis, high school, we've got after school support and ongoing parental support. So last year, maybe some of you came to the, the parent night for our Latino families. It was terrific. Had a speaker, dinner, lots of little workshops. So Vanessa Bernal and Trinidad Rodriguez are planning that again for this year. It will be in November, so earlier in the year. And we're very excited about that. So. And I think the last slide pretty much reiterates where we need to improve, where we want to improve and say continuing with the S I A P or S E I training and the more supports for our students. And then community liaison where we have quite good support from the community helping our students. So, so that's, that's it.
Thank you. So now I'd like to take if there's any questions from the board.
Thank you so much, Kim. It's great that we're starting the year with good news. I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess, but I'm going to ask you to confirm that the 21, 22 school year was a bit of anomaly as we're coming out of COVID and that could have something to do with the lower test scores. I don't, I don't think our kids are that much better prepared in one year. So wanted to know what you thought about that.
That, and I think it was, remember a brand new assessment. So none of us knew what to expect. The students didn't know what to expect. And they're still field testing. So Princeton was chosen as a field test site for this year. So they added additional E L A sections on for our students. So I don't even, I can't even tell you this year, what, what part of the test counted toward their scores. So I guess, how do I put this? The, they were still feeling things out at the state level, I think, with the assessment and sort of adjusted accordingly. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to attribute it all to Tiffany joining us, but always. All right, Beth.
I'd just like to thank, thank you to, to the whole team for the presentation. It was very helpful to get the data and I appreciate that we were able to see it in advance. So we could think about it and look at it before we heard it again tonight. And just a question, did I hear you say, Kim, that there was only 16 children in total in the 11th grade who didn't pass?
Yes, only 16, still 16, but only 16 out of about 344, 345. Of the 16 some, it's just one assessment, meaning just E L A or just math. The majority it is both, but some just have one portfolio or one assessment score to worry about. So it really is good news.
So we have the 16 kids to really keep track of this year and find a way to get them across. That's great. That's great news. Thank you. And then when we look at all these percentages and things, I think it's very, we, it's easy to kind of overlook the fact that we're talking about a real small group of, of students. So I'm glad to hear that. And I was wondering, is, do we have any way of seeing how other districts in our, in our size and cohort are comparing to how we're doing? Are we watching that?
Yes, we, so it's funny that you say that. So usually we get information from Lincoln about, you know, our other district factor groups and we kind of can see comparisons. I have not received that from N J G P A. As a comparison, we will do that for N J S L A to kind of see where we are in sort of the, the term of things. I believe a lot of districts are presenting this week or next week to their boards of education so that I can then start seeing the data. I think Princeton was, even though our scores were lower last year, ahead of the curve over some of our local school districts. And then we continue to be so. Yeah. So that data would be nice to kind of, I can write a note to circle back once we hear from other school districts where their scores landed.
Thank you. And, and thank you to Priscilla and the other supervisors for talking about kind of what, what you're trying to do to make sure we continue to improve, because obviously there's a number of our students who need to, we need to give extra attention. And this is great that we can see where we need to improve. So thank you.
Abby?
Thank you, everybody. Always good to see it all. So I was curious, Priscilla, maybe a little more, if you could talk a little more about what are your out of school kind of ideas to support the students? I know you said the high school had a bunch and the numbers kind of showed that middle school needed a little more. So I was just kind of curious. And, and how do we, as a board, you know, support some of that?
Okay. So we can say out of school is also out of school year. And in the summer for our elementary kids, we have the LEAP program, Learning English Across Programs. And so that's, now it's a four week half day program. This year it was at Littlebrook School. So it's an, it's an academic support program for our kids. In years past, it's been as long as six weeks. And it's been more than three hours long in the, in the daytime. So I would not be averse to expanding the program, but money always is a factor in this. We have after school tutoring for our students, especially at the high school and somewhat at the middle school. So where, where, where we just haven't done particularly well, or well, I should say, is in parent outreach, because I, it's so important to have, have the families involved and with some of our community to work on literacy skills with, with the parents. We've got a couple of new staff members. You know, we've started D L I pre-K class at Community Park. And the two paraprofessionals are very excited about reaching out to the family. One, Levy Guedero, who actually was an E S L student here in our schools and has now graduated from college and is working with young students. So I'm, I'm hoping that this year we will not have just the one parent night, but more. So.
Would be great. Thank you.
Um, thank you so much. Thanks guys for the presentation. It was very informative, you know, as always. So, so here's my question. First of all, can you tell me the demographics of the students who, the 16 students who did not have a successful testing experience with the E L A?
With E L A or with math or with both?
With both.
And so I, I can't give specifics, but maybe we could have an offline because of the, the size of the population and privacy. However, the, the data in the presentation will tell you the story very clearly. It's, if the students are Hispanic, they're black, they have an I E P, they're E S L or they're, they receive E S L services. That sort of is the, the profile that we're seeing in the data. So the students of the 16, many of them hit one or two of those categories, Michelle.
So, so this is my question because you, and you know, I've been sending articles around because I've been reading about this and this is not specific to Princeton. I've been living here over 30 years and I've been seeing the same report for 30 years. And so, so I'm wondering, do we engage with other schools, similarly situated school districts, Shaker Heights or other university towns that sort of seem this, have this same challenge year after year after year and, and try to drill down on it? I'd just be interested from a macro level, I'd just be interested in how we get our arms around this. Is there anybody innovating or doing anything?
Yeah, there's M S A N, Michelle. It's a national organization and, and schools like Shaker Heights or Madison, Wisconsin. Yeah. And that, and so you come together at least once a year and talk about these similar issues. Maybe Evanston is part of, part of this too. Yeah.
But I guess my question is, oh, so, so for the, the kids that were, who's, who's in M S A N? And is it, are the kids represented who are struggling in, in this area? The free and reduced lunch, the, you know, brown and black kids, are they participating in a meaningful way in this organization? But I guess the thing about it is, you know, it, it's not the kids. It, it's, it's our, it's our educational structure. And again, I'm not trying to beat up on Princeton because we can, you can name a whole bunch of places that have the same challenge. And I'm just wondering, as a, in a broader way, how are we, who are we talking to and is anybody studying this?
So I just want to clarify a couple of things. M S A N is actually more of a think tank for school districts similar to Princeton that have noticed, even though the school system or the residents who send their children to our schools are on average affluent and have access to in the schools, lots of resources that we're still seeing the same opportunity gaps. I believe that Princeton Public Schools was one of the original members of, of M S A N. What they provide more so is ties to the research. So you have your superintendent that's a part of the governing board. And we're able to have two people on the research practitioner council. And they really engage a lot with the researchers around a variety of areas. For what we're talking about this evening, at the, you know, and I, I am, I know that I am simplifying it probably a bit too much. But at the end of the day, it's about the climate and culture for the students, their sense of belonging, their sense of being their authentic self, number one. And number two, it is about where they are sitting at the time of this test. So if we were to ask more so for these 16 students, what math course had they already completed? For these 16 students, what E L A humanities courses, where are they? And based on that information, what's happening? You know, what does that curricular curriculum look like? What interventions have been in place to help support students reach grade level? I think those are the kinds of questions. And again, it's being like really simplified, but the district has had a long history of being aligned with think tanks, having access to research and also a peer group, how well we have engaged in that. While we have, you know, contributed to our annual fee, you know, that I can't answer prior to 2021. But we, we have been engaged, you know, since, since my tenure began. And I would assume when Judy Wilson was here and Steve Conqueror was here as well, I just can't. you know, since my tenure began, and I would assume when Judy Wilson was here, when Steve Conqueror was here as well, I just can attest to that.
Jean?
Thank you, and thanks for the good report and the good questions. And for Dr. Kelly and Dr. Two, is it possible to that the sixteen, I know this is a new test, right? These are new data points for us, so we can't really compare with years past, but we also have a population of kids arriving with interrupted learning experiences. So they may, you know, by years, they should be a sophomore, but by education, they would be, you know, in a much lower grade. So we have interrupted learning experiences. They're arriving new to our district. They may not have gone through our district from elementary all the way up through. And so I just wanted to make that point as well, that the population that we serve is, you know, very diverse and very mixed, and it's not the same, you know, it's not the same for every student. They're starting at different places.
That is very true. And I think for our district, students are have the opportunity to be incredibly blessed by the amount of resources that we have. So when they come to, and I know that our school district is not an island, but when they come to this island, our aspirational goal for students is that, as Kim stated earlier, that we are, and I think Keisha did as well, we are determining what, where students are by use of that common data, which we are developing, so it's not there yet. And we are providing what additional scaffolding, additional intervention support that they might need often, and monitoring their progress often, so that we can accelerate their learning. It can be done. I think that's the point that Michelle was saying. You know, do we have connections with other school districts that have done this work? And what are we learning from the research and from them? What also are we learning right here in Princeton where we're seeing it happen in our classrooms? But you know, I think the beauty of public schools is not necessarily stopping at where students are entering or that background, but using the assets that they're bringing to our classroom and really helping them, if necessary, to accelerate their learning. So my listening to what Tiffany and Keisha had to say around like their area of folk eye, using the data to determine and inform what actions we will do next, incorporating the voices of our students and our staff as we're doing that is really like at the heart of our strategic plan.
All right, great. Anyone else? Dr. Two, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I would remiss if I didn't thank the staff, because I think they help our students learn every single day to get to this achievement. I think, you know, obviously, we're going to create these individualized plans for those sixteen students, but I don't want to leave here tonight without saying this is really, really good news for our district. And I'm very excited to know that the majority of our juniors have one less, or rising seniors, I should say, have one less worry off their plate, and they can worry about, you know, that next step of, you know, what does life look like after senior at PHS? So this is one sort of checkmark on that box, and they've shown us that they have mastered those content standards. So we're pleased for them. We want to celebrate our staff and students in their achievements.
Thank you very much. That's, thank you for pointing that out. And thank you to the administrators for joining us. And Priscilla, please feed that cat.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good. Have a good night. We'll see you next week.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. All right, moving on now to, we're going to turn this over to Mr. Bolden. Mr. Bolden, I just want to let you know, we're going to have a slight change in programming. We're going to go over the November seventh, twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three referendum presentation. And then before we vote, we're going to move public comment up, just in case anyone in the public would like to have something to say before we vote. So with that, Mr. Bolden, it is all yours.
Sounds great. Thank you, Board President. So we're excited here to discuss the looming November seventh, two thousand twenty-three referendum on the general election date. It's nice when we're able to be able to hold a referendum on that date. It does save us some money. We're not always able to do that due to timing of projects, et cetera. You know, our overall strategy, we've, I want to reiterate, the district is really taking, I think, a prudent financial strategy and layering in projects for a few reasons, I think, is prudent. First of all, it's hard to take on too many large projects all at once. So we've been staggering in referendum, referenda, I should say. And it helps us to be able to complete those projects better. Public bidding environment, which we're required to by law, taking the lowest public bidder is challenging, can be very challenging. And also, we're able to leverage debt service aid, state aid through referenda. We get up to, up to thirty-four percent of principal and interest on the bonds to finance projects. So real briefly, just to look past and forward to November two thousand eighteen, we had just over twenty-seven million dollar referendum. The largest project was the addition at the high school. Well, maybe larger than that overall was the HVAC at five schools. We put in in total about a hundred and seventy Airedale units plus other rooftop units, and we did a number of security measures as well. In January two thousand twenty-two, to a three-to-one margin, the voters passed the referendum. We're focusing mostly on roofing, some siding and masonry, and a smaller amount of continuing to look at the HVAC on the rooftops. And then looking forward to where we're headed on November seventh, we're focusing on security, technology upgrade, upgrades, playgrounds, and some field rehabilitation at the high school, as well as the PHS cafeteria. So all six schools will benefit if the referendum passes. The breakout in categories, safety and security would be the biggest, over four million dollars, just over thirty-one and a half percent. Wellness and sustainability at twenty-seven point one percent, or three point, just about three point five, three million. Major maintenance, twenty-three percent, three million dollars. And then technology infrastructure upgrades, really focusing on having a robust ten gig network. So all good projects that we need to do. The high school key projects, new doors and lock, security vestibules, camera upgrades, protective window film. I just mentioned technology upgrade to a ten gig network, athletic field and track refurbishment, PHS cafeteria renovations, which will help in the high school. Many parents and some staff may not realize there's one lunch period at the high school for getting close to sixteen hundred children. So we want to be able to efficiently get them through and get a healthy lunch, healthy and nutritious lunch. Updates to the Echolab instructional wetlands habitat and detention basin. The middle school, once again, we're focusing on security, new doors and lock, security and camera upgrades, technology upgrade to ten gig network, and some minor improvements to the pool. The, most of the omitters are looking the same. The difference here, Community Park and also Johnson Park, will have some playground area drainage work, technology upgrades to a ten gig network. Security and camera upgrades are the primary focus in this referendum, along with protective window film, some minor fencing replacement. We just want to manage expectations with the playground upgrades at five of our schools. You know, we're not going to redo each playground entirely. Much of the equipment is functioning well. Some of it needs to be worked on. We are working on a couple of the schools right now, focusing on some issues. Johnson Park, also security upgrades, ten gig network upgrades, like I said, minor playground upgrades and fencing replacement. Littlebrook, same sort of projects. Littlebrook and CP, as I mentioned, are having some drainage work done to the playground areas. That should really help the kids. And Riverside looks like the other schools really focusing on security, technology, and some minor playground upgrades. So I want to talk a little bit about, you know, the state aid. We, in this set of submissions to the State Department of Education, just over thirty-one percent, exactly thirty-one point two eight percent of the projects were awarded for debt service aid. That's out of potential thirty-four percent. So that's great. It's just under thirteen million dollars in total. If we're to do it through the regular budget, local taxes would be required to cover all the project costs. The impact on the referendum over the thirteen-year bond is, on the approximate average of assessed value of a home is just under a hundred and four dollars per year for the debt service on these projects. This, the bond is, would be proposed to be thirteen years. We're estimating right now three and a half percent interest rate. Could go up, but could go down. I don't want to prognosticate. As the costs of the projects are paid off, we can make steady investments at a lower tax rate. This is a chart of our historical and prospective debt service. We are trying, as we talked about, making these investments in our district to hopefully keep our debt service at the fiscal twenty twenty-one. These are net debt service numbers, so it means our gross actual payments, less the debt service aid, and also a little, a small piece is also earnings on invest and balances while we complete the projects. So as you can see, in the darker blue is our existing debt as we see it. The new debt, which would start to kick in in twenty twenty-five, there's a small, just about two hundred fifty thousand dollar projected increase. Once again, that's at an estimated third, three and a half percent interest rate. It is over thirteen years. However, this small amount should be, the difference there should hopefully be made up by interest on the invested balances, as most people are aware. I think the short-term investments, interest rates are very high right now. It's probably not going to stay that way for too long, but it should cover that difference to be able to bring this total to our fiscal twenty-four, which we are in fiscal twenty-four right now, levels. And that's, that's about it. More to come. We're obviously going to be discussing this and working on this and having public outreach, educating our parents. Board members were great last time, so we expect greatness to continue. We're going to address various stakeholder groups, especially focusing on our PTOs, back-to-school nights, and we really look forward to having great support from the community on these necessary projects. So I'd like to open it up first to any questions from the board before we take some public comment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Those are very good presentations. I especially appreciated that you provide an estimated tax impact. So Brian?
Sure. Matt, I had the privilege to sit in when you met with the police chief and his deputies, several of us did. And I wanted to express my gratitude to our local police officers for the very hard and thorough work that they've done to advise us. And just wondered if you could say a bit more about the role that they've played, particularly with respect to the largest component of the referendum, having to do with safety and security.
Yeah, it's been, it's been great. Dr. Kelly's really been proactive in getting the police force in with us, communicating last June. They did a walkthrough of all six schools, came up with some recommendations. The price tags on these improvements were such that many of them had to be pushed out to the referendum for a vote, which is good in the sense that we will get thirty-one point two eight percent of the principal and interest paid for. We've had some really good work on security over the last year, bringing the police department in for some training in the high school this summer. So we're really taking a proactive approach. It's very important that they know our schools in case, you know, an emergent situation occurs. So they've made a lot of recommendations. We've also been working with a consultant, we've been working with Corey Larimar, our Director of Student Safety, Health and Wellness. I always mess up his title, but I think I got it right finally. He's been doing a lot of work, helping to work on our plans. And so this will get us in even better shape to have the safest schools possible.
All right, thank you. And I just would like to point out that Dr. Foster, who's the interim principal at the high school, has also been very involved in setting up the drills that went on, I think, every Thursday in August. So didn't want to leave her out. Debbie?
Yeah, so I wanted to also share with the public, you know, it seems like we keep doing these referendums, which we are, but we're also looking at like specific things our schools need, like a lot here is the safety. And it's, you know, logistically, this is a good way for us to do it because of the supply chain and because we're not bidding huge, huge projects, because they're more manageable for the entire staff, which I think is a great thing. And so it might seem like we keep showing up, but these are things that, you know, we need to do for our schools, like we needed the roofs. And unfortunately, with the way society is, we need all this safety at our school, you know, we really do. And so you know, this is how the board feels with the administration is a great way for us to get projects done, because our operating budget cannot support it. And so you know, just to let the public know, we feel this is the best way for us to take care of our facilities and move on. So I just wanted to share that. Thanks.
Thank you, Debbie. Susan?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you, Matt, and the administrative team for, over the last year, one, listening to our students. They've been talking about the cafeteria and the equity, especially for those students on free and reduced lunch, to make sure that all of our students can get through the cafeteria in a fashion that allows them time to eat with their peers. And, you know, we have older buildings, so to continue the maintenance, continue to expand the capacity, the seating capacity in that area, I think is going to be really important. The student, our student reps also mentioned last year that difficulty with the computer connectivity. Many schools have mentioned the cell service issues that we've all seen around town, but can be especially difficult in a school for if there's an emergency situation. And I know, you know, the playgrounds have been kind of an issue that we've wanted to work on for several years. So I'm glad that you were able to get some of the ground that needs in the grounds in the playgrounds, so that we can continue to invest in that area, where just as we learned in the pandemic is so important to our kids. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Susan. Dr. Kelly?
Yes, I also wanted to just thank Mr. Bolden for his collaboration with Sustainable Princeton. We actually just had a meeting earlier today, so I think the work that's proposed in the referendum at the high school in the kitchen will help us transition from the paper products that we can't really recycle to more of the reusable products by way of allowing the kitchen to have dishwashers. So thank you for your work on that.
All right, thank you, Dr. Kelly. All right. Oh, Beth, yes.
Yeah, and I just also wanted to give a real shout out to Mr. Bolden and his team, because, you know, I think it's not the most glamorous thing that gets done is talking about this operation stuff, but it's so fundamental to us for us to be able to serve our students. And I feel that over the last five or six years, it's been a really, one of the most satisfying things to watch is, is Mr. Bolden has got into his position with Dave Harding as well. They've taken our buildings and our facilities, which really didn't feel like they had been cared for for many decades, and they had so many things that we had to address. And one by one, we've been doing that with them, and it's been a constant process. But I think we've been coming to the community as we can with projects that are doable over time, and our team has become much more effective and efficient in their execution. And so I just appreciate that they were able to manage this small referendum while we were implementing the last one and fixing the roofs, and they've been able to really kind of create a process where we're doing longer term and shorter term and keeping track of what has to happen and taking really, I think, very good care of our buildings in a way that is, is going to be good for the future. So thank you for all this work.
All right, thank you, Beth. Anyone else? No. All right. So now we're going to open up public comments on agenda items and non-agenda items. And before And before Mr. Bolden calls on you, please just keep your comments to three minutes. And please keep them civil. When you start to speak, please let us know just the street live on and the town. And your name. Thank you.
Great. Portia Wong?
Hi, my name is Portia Wong. I live on Snowden Lane in Princeton. I'm districted for Littlebrook School. I hope I'm coming through clearly. I'm actually, I'm actually on vacation in Maryland right now. But I felt that this was a very important thing that I needed to call in about.
Yep, you're crystal clear, Portia.
Okay, good, good. I'm never really sure what the internet's like. Yes, so it was brought to my attention from a couple of different sources today that. And I'm not sure if this is the question for Dr. Kelly or for the Personnel Committee, but it was brought to my attention that at Littlebrook. The decision's been made to collapse kindergarten from three classes to two classes. And reassign one of the kindergarten teachers to teach a new fourth grade class. And I'm hoping for you to confirm that, and then also explain the decision. I don't really understand how. This decision was arrived at. It sounds like the district is valuing third grade over kindergarten. Because it's a testing year, so it's like, oh, we should have the smaller class be in third grade because they need it for the testing. But looking back at everything that Dr. Kelly has said about the strategic plan and forward focus and. Specifically focused on the early years, kindergarten is a really, really important year for that. It's where kids. Learn how to learn. It's where they learn how to behave in a school setting, what's expected of them, how to interact with their teachers, their peers, all of that. But additionally, when you take forty children and cram them into two classrooms, you get problems that kind of trickle up. Throughout their academic experience. So academic issues are harder to identify and slower to address, and the same goes for social emotional learning. And behavioral problems. And getting a little, moving from the abstract to the personal a little bit. I have two children that are coming into kindergarten this year, one of whom is a special needs child. And so as I think back to the lovely tea that Carol and I had at M.T. And she was talking about, you know, like where every learner thrives and like. Mine won't. My special needs child. And other special needs children like won't thrive in a situation that is. Prime for the kind of overstimulation that happens when you put twenty feral kindergartners into a classroom. And so what, what I'd like to say is that it is not too late to change this back. And I'd like for you all to give real consideration to the people who are being affected here. I. From, I've, this has completely blown up this day of vacation with my kids because I've been on the phone literally. All day long about this, but. The Littlebrook staff and parents are, seem to really be united in this request for. Smaller kindergarten class sizes and to match what the rest of the district looks like with these three classes that are smaller. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you so much, Portia. Mr. Bolden, can we make that smaller, please? Great. Thank you. And up next we have Charles. Hugh?
This is Charles Shu. I, I live in Princeton on Riverside Drive. I have a question pertaining to the referendum. Can the board offer some insight and some transparency as to? I guess. The method that was used to establish an estimate. On the cost. And if these proposals. Have, you know, what method of vetting. Was conducted to evaluate, you know, this, this budget that's being, being asked. Cause, you know, for example, as we're talking about the security system, there's various levels of. Security that could be implemented throughout the school. You know, what, I guess, who makes the decision to. Accept a proposed prize that, that would. You know, are we talking about? You know, what, what scale are we talking about, right? And then what was level of security are we talking about? And what is the process that went through to come up with this budget? Same goes for the other systems. As you're, you know, securing, as you're. Soliciting quotes and proposals and estimates for your HPAC repair. What kind of warranties and what kind of contractors are you? You know, bringing on board for, for this, this work. I'd just like to see if that. Approach or that any kind of thinking can be made transparent to the public.
So Mr. Shu and I'll let Mr. Bolden jump in, but we are a public entity, so we have to go to the lowest. We have to take, we have to work with the lowest qualified bidder, with the exception of professional services. And as far as security, we met with the police, and there are also best practices for security standards. For schools. So for, for instance, the, the changes that we proposed to make at Princeton High School were first proposed in twenty eighteen. To shore up the entrances to the high school because they don't, don't conform with best practice. So we're not looking to make the schools. Fortresses, but we are making that, we don't want them to be soft targets either. Mr. Bolden, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, please?
Yeah, just to go out some of the estimating. Is, we do utilize professional architects and also our construction manager. They've been very valuable. They have their fingers on the pulse of the. Construction and rehabilitation of schools at all different types of projects. It's never a perfect science. Sometimes when we actually go out to bid. We get really well-bid projects with active price competition. And sometimes we don't. Sometimes we have to reject bids and go out again, which we had to do. With the larger roofing projects that will be done next summer instead. So it does take a lot of work. We get a lot of input from various contractors, vendors, like I said, and our construction managers and architects. Really are the primary source of that. It's an interesting thing too, because, you know, we don't. While we pride ourselves in transparency with the community members such as yourself and others. You know, we don't want to necessarily broadcast out there exactly what our estimates are for each project. We develop them internally. And we work on them in committees. Hope that gives a little more insight into the process, process.
Yeah, and I, I think it's clear, you know, as long as there are professionals involved, but you know, I'm. I, I would be more interested in. I guess. Finding out how the scope of work. Is established, you know, in terms of security, it seems like. It's heavily reliant on, on the police department, per se. Is there any consideration of getting? Input from the community? And as to, you know, the other scopes of work, who, who makes that call, right?
Input since I've been here in the four years about security, you know, people are, are definitely.
Yep, but Mr. Shu, our operations meetings are open to the public. Some of them, I mean, always some of it is closed, but every meeting is open to the public, and I would encourage you. To attend those meetings. They're held virtually. And you might get more information there, but we're not. You know, we, we work with experts in, in school security, and we always take feedback from parents. So. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, to, okay, so if, if those decisions have been made. Can, can the scope of work be made available to the community to kind of. Just get an understanding of what, what exactly we're paying for?
Sure, and I think, I think we've been transparent with that. We're doing. And Mr. Bolden, you can chime in, but we're doing doors that, Mr. Bolden, go ahead.
So, a big part of the project focuses on making sure the middle school and high school have. Well-functioning doors with push-button locks on the inside. We, you know, security is also an area too. We don't want necessarily. It's a relatively small group tonight, and that's fine, you know, but these things.
It's on, it's on YouTube forever, so let's be.
It's on YouTube forever, so we're also looking at window films, window filming. The high school's security vestibules to both at the back and the front of the building, the pack entrance and the main front entrance. We're upgrading cameras throughout the building, which helped with student population, and then if there is. Or ever any incidents. God forbid, they help in that regard too. We've, we've been consistently focusing on that. We upgraded our software this year for our video. For our camera equipment. Offer under, offer for him, it was expensive. Those are, those are some of the things we've been working on. We do have a security consultant. I did mention that, I think, in the presentation, yeah, in the beginning. We work with him as well. He's a former. State trooper, very well-versed in school security.
Yep. Alright, thank you, Mr. Bolden. And if we could circle back for one minute, Portia joined us on vacation. And I just, if someone could just respond, if that's what's indeed happening at Littlebrook, I think we are. Dr. Kelly, if you could answer that, please. Thank you.
Sure, sure, sure. Hi, Portia, thank you for, well, I, I'm not sure your children would say thank you, but I appreciate. You being on the line this morning, or this evening, I'm sorry. Part of your, your statement was correct, in that there were three sections of kindergarten. At Littlebrook with the total students that were enrolled of forty. Which would have made each section about thirteen or fourteen students. And we also had. I think on average, I think it was three sections of third grade. I'm looking at Dr. Two because registration. Flows through her office, which meant, and I think there were seventy-eight students, but there were on, on average. Twenty-three to twenty-four students. In my time at Princeton, Dr. Two works very closely with Lori Onetto. Who's been here for quite a while. We see students come into the school district all throughout the school year. So we are anticipating that all of our, all of our schools at every grade level will see like families moving in. As well as out. But traditionally. My, just based on my experiences, Portia, you see more families moving in with older students. You know, at the third, fourth, fifth grade level than you do like at the pre-K kindergarten level, not saying that it might not happen. So this is not necessarily a science in terms of how we strategically staff our schools. But right now, where we're sitting, we thought that it would be best to add a section to third grade. We are, there, there is a physical constraint at Littlebrook in terms of. Clash, classroom space, but mostly just trying to, you know, a part of my role is trying to. Use the staff. In ways where, where not necessarily. Using FTEs that are made available to us. So the Board of Ed through its last Personnel Committee meeting. Has allowed us, as we have been looking at these numbers, they have allowed us to have. If needed, two additional FTE at the elementary level. We did use one of the two over at Riverside, and right now we have not used the other. The two of two yet, but we are still looking. What we have available at Littlebrook for kindergarten, you know, by moving that one section to third grade. We are able to use additional staff that is in the building, and Dr. Kep- to correct me if I'm wrong. To assist in the kindergarten classrooms. I would. Be not telling the truth. If I said to anyone here that I would ideally, you know, is twenty students in a kindergarten classroom. I do. It's, I would love to have it lower. However, we felt right now. Given that we have another school. That is tracking towards that twenty without the additional staff members in that building. That could be used as an assistant at the kindergarten level, that it was best for us at this point right now. Based upon what we know to not use the second FTE that the Personnel. Committee has allotted us to. So I hope I explained that correctly. Dr. Two, did you want to add anything else?
No, that, that explains it correctly, and, and the same sentiments that Dr. Kelly shared, you know, we, we don't love the number of twenty. And so we're looking at different ideas of support across the district, and I just, I think it's important to talk about in context as well as we talk about. Littlebrook's numbers. So when you look at our numbers across the district. At CP, we are at seventeen, eighteen and eighteen in the three sections. At Riverside, we're at seventeen and nineteen, and at JP, we're at fifteen, fifteen and fourteen. They sort of hit that tipping point for a third section. But they also at JP and at Riverside have students in self-contained classes who we pushing in. At different points of the day and the learning experiences. So we are, I hate to say that it's, it's not too far off of what we're experiencing. You know, across the district of class size.
Well, thank you, Doc.
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just trying to, we were supposed to be done by nine, so we're over. Mr. Holden?
Great. Jill North?
Hi, my name is Jill North. I live in Princeton on Sycamore Road. I wanted to make a request concerning the math program. Last year, some parents pointed to numerous problems, not only with the math placement process, but also with the math curriculum. At the middle and high schools. I was hoping that the schools would be willing to share updates with parents on what's being done to fix those problems. I myself would be eager to hear about plans in place to reintroduce different levels of math class instruction in the sixth grade. Since D-tracking in the sixth grade proved to be disastrous for many kids, including my own. As well as ideas for reforming the mass placement process throughout the grades. Though I'd be interested to hear about any curricular reforms being implemented in the middle and high schools, including for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill, and I'll just remind everyone that we're in the process of a math, is that right? We're still in the process of math review. Dr. Two, if you could just provide a brief update?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll try to be very brief. So we are, they, they spent the summer reviewing all the data, our achievement data, survey data. Classroom observation data, et cetera. So in mid-September, where I think we're gonna have a program checkpoint, looking at the data, and then we'll start. Kind of reviewing it, make sure that it makes sense to us, and then share the recommendations with the full board and the community. So we're looking at early fall. I don't want to make a promise of a specific date in mind, but yes, definitely early fall. I also want to point out that New Jersey is on the cusp of approving new math and ELA standards. They might be a little bit delayed, but it is perfect timing when we look at our programming to look at the math standards and how our courses are aligning to them, our placement is. Processes are aligned to them, et cetera. So it's, it's all working out to be aligned. However, we are basically at a, a holding pattern for now. Until we get that data and can act upon it.
So with regards to the math review, so there, there would be some kind of presentation to the board i- in, in the fall, is what you're saying?
I would say they would come to SAC, and then it would come, yes, to the board.
To the whole board. And then at that time, the community would be able to, you know, I mean, they've already been able to provide inputs because we had the focus groups. But they'd be able to ask questions and, and so I guess I, what I would say, Jill, is just be patient and you should have answers soon. In the fall, once the math review's complete. Okay. Mr. Holden?
Colleen Potts?
Hi, my name is Colleen Potts. I live on Poe Road in Princeton. The first question I have for all of you is if you could raise your hand if you've taught in a traditional kindergarten classroom? Could you give me a thumbs up if you heard me? Okay, great. I'm just reaching out on behalf of Littlebrook families as well. We just would really like to have a smaller classroom, I think, for many reasons, as Portia mentioned. Additionally, we have a lot of COVID kids that have very little experience in classrooms with other children. So we have that behavioral piece as well as that curriculum. And twenty children is a lot. I mean, it's like exponentially growth, like an exponential growth by. Um, and twenty children is a lot. I mean, it's like exponentially growth, like an exponential growth by kid. As a former kindergarten and first grade teacher. Um, and also Littlebrook has the institute kids, um, which I love. And there's a lot of cultural differences that come from people from a different country coming into the US, uh, expectations in the classroom. So those are two of the, um, considerations I'd like you to think about, um, with this decision, as well as when children do move into the district, although it's been tipped towards the older children. What, what's the plan for the kindergartners that, that move into Littlebrook?
You mean, uh, families who actually live in the Littlebrook area?
Yeah, like, there's a lot of construction around here, and so the ones that move into the Littlebrook districting, like, a month from now.
Right. It depends on where they live in the Littlebrook area. If you're talking about new construction, those students are being, um, sent to Riverside, which explains some of, I don't know if that explains some of the growth, but we are seeing growth at Riverside as well. Um, and your other question was?
Um, if, like, there's lots of new development in the neighborhoods as it is, like, not, not the big apartment buildings or anything. Just if someone moves in two weeks from now, um, will they go to Littlebrook? Or will they be going to a different school that, like, Johnson Park has those lower numbers? Like, what would that look like?
Um, I think we would probably want to, before we've made decisions like that, look at what Johnson Park classrooms look like when the students from, uh, self-contained rooms are pushing into the general ed, uh, classrooms. Um, because though a lot of their students are not in their self-contained classroom throughout the entire day.
Okay. Um, and then additionally, is there like a ten-day count where you reconsider after the school year starts, or anything like that?
Not to my knowledge. Have you ever heard of that, uh, Dr. Two?
Um, I have not done that in my previous district. I'm not sure what the past practice was in Princeton.
No, I think that past practices, you know, we add a section if it's needed.
And that certainly, you know, uh, we have one additional FTE that's still on the wings, but we would need, um, obviously, there's more than one school that's approaching, uh, that twenty K.
Yeah, I think, I think we all understand that, and we appreciate you taking your time to speak with us tonight, but we just want to make sure that our voice is heard as well as the parents.
Well, thank you, Colleen. We appreciate your joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate DeLuca.
Hi, um, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks. Um, my name is Kate DeLuca. I live in Princeton as well on TR Place. Uh, I have two children at Littlebrook, one who will be entering kindergarten and one who will be entering third grade. Um, I am really concerned about, um, the consolidation to two classrooms, uh, for kindergarten. Um, I'm not going to repeat what, um, you know, what others have said, but, you know, I fully support what they've said. Um, I did want to make a couple of other points, though. The first point, I think, um, I get to speak for myself and other parents that we felt really blindsided by this news. Um, it wasn't communicated in a transparent way, um, to say the least. Um, we sort of, I, I just found out about it today, like others from other parents. Um, we did receive materials last week about kindergarten orientation. They, those materials listed three teachers, um, you know, not, not classroom assignments, but, but said there would be three sections. So, um, I, I just don't really appreciate the, the way that, or I guess the lack thereof of communication. And I would just ask, um, to, for more transparency about these, uh, decisions and things like that in the future, especially, you know, affecting kindergarteners. Um, as others have pointed out, this is going to be, um, their first, um, foray into school. My child, um, was not in, not selected for pre-K, for public pre-K, so this will be his first experience, um, in the public school system. And so, uh, I think it's just really important for us to be informed, um, through official channels. And I ask that that, that happen in the future. And then, um, I also just wanted to share, um, my son now, my older son has been at Littlebrook in kindergarten, first and second grade. And every year, uh, there have been new students, several, at least three or four. So, you know, right now we're talking about two sections of twenty, but, um, I, I think based on past numbers, it could easily be two sections of twenty-two or twenty-three. And it just doesn't seem equitable, um, especially when we, you know, have this other position that, that is available, um, to not plan for that, um, and plan for, for new families moving into the district. Um, so I really would, would really, uh, ask that you all reconsider this decision. Um, and again, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Kate.
Here. Renee Holzman.
Hi, everyone. Um, can you hear me? Sorry, I'm just traveling. Well. Hi, my name's Renee Holzman, and I live on Rollman Street, also in the Littlebrook District. And I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for listening to our comments, and I just want to share the same sentiment as all the other Littlebrook families. And I really just wanted to ask a question. If there was an FTE available for this, you know, for hiring, why are we not, uh, the district not hiring a third, additional third grade teacher? And then secondly, what if there are additional kindergartners that enroll in Littlebrook or across the district? What is the plan for that?
So to, is, uh, hopefully it's okay to answer the question. To respond to the first question, we are attempting to balance out the, um, the, the, um, ideal, like, classroom size, um, in our district with also, um, trying to be, uh, res- responsive and responsible to one of the things that we've heard, um, from not just the board, but, you know, some members of the community regarding, um, uh, being fiscally responsible and not adding to the current deficit. Um, in terms of the additional, uh, students in kindergarten, we do understand the concerns. Um, but I think a part of the thinking is that there, the plan would not be one adult to the twenty students, but there would be, uh, another adult in the classroom to assist. And again, I, I've not yet had conversations with Principal Ramirez, but I'm assuming that that is going to be his plan, um, for both of the kindergarten classrooms. Um, so that is where our thinking is. Um, and as, um, you know, Dr. Two and I both understand, uh, you know, we make the recommendations, but if there is, um, other options that the board would like us to put in place, we would, you know, we will, uh, do that just based on listening to, uh, the community. Um, but my recommendation does stand. Um, I think it's a good, um, plan that, uh, Principal Ramirez is putting in place, doing the strategic staffing. Uh, I don't think it's as much about tested grades because, as you know, early learning, um, or making sure that our earliest learners are on point and at grade level by the end of kindergarten, so that they are reading either at or above grade level by the end of grade three is very important to us. Um, but I think just based on where the current numbers are at third grade, um, and also the propensity for more students, when they do, uh, come into the district, we get more students at the third, fourth, and fifth grade. Um, I, you know, and also looking across the district as well. So that's my rationale. Um, I, you know, am not offended if my recommendation is, um, you know, if there are other thoughts of overturning the recommendation, but that, you know, hopefully explains, like, the thinking in my head.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. And I'll, I'll just point out, um, that, uh, it was shared that the kindergarten classes at Littlebrook at the end of the year were nineteen, seventeen, and twenty. Um, so, you know, my children went to Littlebrook, um, I'm biased, but those teachers are the best in the district. Um, and so we will keep an eye on the enrollment. You have our word. I think that's what we're all saying here. And, uh, and, and we'll, we'll do what we need to do to maintain, you know, the, the education experience that parents are moved to Princeton for. All right, Mr. Bolden, do we have anyone else?
Katie Dunn.
Hi, this is Katie Dunn. I live, uh, in Princeton, on Princeton Kingston Road. Um, but I live on the Littlebrook side, not the River Brooks, uh, Riverside side. Um, and I just want to say thank you, Daphna, for saying what you just said. Um, because I think there's a couple of things going on, um, even behind, um, you know, and it's just that we, um, I, well, I guess one question I have is what the numbers are going to be for third grade. Um, because I know that a fourth, third grade is probably a necessary move, or you wouldn't be doing this. Um, and, but it's hard to swallow because, uh, well, one, the numbers, but two, um, I mean, I actually refer to our kindergarten teachers as the dream teams. And that's all three of them, and they're an incredible team together. And, um, you know, we have a very strong culture at our school. Um, and it's a very tight-knit community that, um, it's hard to imagine what that shift will look like for one of those teachers, um, which we heard most likely is Miss Caruso, moving into the third grade, um, position. And, um, you know, her having been with the kindergartners for so long and moving into third grade, which teachers do this all the time, and she's stellar and will be great, um, especially with the support of the, um, amazing, um, administration at Littlebrook. Um, but I think that's where a lot of this is coming from, is just, um, again, as Kate DeLuca said, the, the shock of it, um, the not expecting it, how the news came to everyone. And, um, so thank you for taking all those things into consideration. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Katie. Mr. Bolden, do we have anyone else?
No.
Okay. Well, we have another public comment session later, uh, if you missed your chance here. All right. So now we're going to move back on to the November seventh, twenty twenty-three referendum, and we're going to, uh, can I get a motion for a resolution providing for the submission of a bond proposal question at the annual school election on November seventh, twenty twenty-three, for consideration by the legally qualified voters of the school district. Brian, second. Beth. All right, um, is there any discussion?
I'll just say, can I just say that we don't, by law, we have to have this language. The question is very difficult to understand, and we've, for years, asked whether they can be simpler, but they can't. So we apologize that that's what it's going to look like on the ballot.
Well, I mean, there's a lawyer whose job it is to do this, right? So if they changed it, speaking as a lawyer, that would be a lawyer out of a job. We don't want to do that. Right? Anyway, so with that, Mr. Bolden, did you want to call the roll?
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Betsy Baglia.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
De Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dean Durbin.
Yes.
Mara Franceschi.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Ryan McDonald.
Yes.
Mel Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Well, thank you again, Mr. Bolden, for your work on that. Uh, and then we'll continue. So just the beginning. All right, now we're moving on to item I, amended semi-annual student safety data report. Is there anything we need to do with that, uh, Dr. Kelly?
No, um, I just wanted to point out to the board and community that the, uh, report that was posted last month, uh, was comparing a half of year, uh, last school year to a full, you know, year instead of just a half the year. So was, uh,
It was a mistake. So we're just updating it. Now, okay, thank you. And then, uh, an action item, um, the harassment, intimidation, and bullying hearing. Can I get a motion, please? Michelle, second. Brian.
Daphne Kendall.
Abstain.
Betsy Baglia.
Abstain.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Abstain.
Mara Franceschi.
Abstain.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Ryan McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Now we're going to move on to board committee highlights. We're going to start with, uh, long-term planning. I feel like this meeting has been a lot of long-term planning, but, uh, with co-chairs Beth Baron and Brian McDonald, who is doing it today.
Thank you, Daphna. And Brian will, Brian will correct me if I miss anything, but I, we have, you know, a brief report. Again, we're still working hard in the trenches and the facilities, long-term facilities planning, meeting, committee met with our consultants again in, in the administration on Thursday, August seventeenth, to continue our review of options for addressing capacity challenges in the four elementary schools, including renovation and or expansion of facilities and redistricting. Um, the new architect has, was hired and is working closely with our planners and our administration and our staff and on the important process of assigning capital and operating costs to the various models. Um, and they're making progress. Um, these are critical factors for us to lay out for the public and for the board, for us to understand we have a rubric, and we're trying to refine that and bring it to a place where we can have an intelligent discussion about it as a community and understand the different options and weigh them together. We asked that this, uh, Student Achievement Committee also review data with our consultants, and they did so last week. So they had the opportunity to see, uh, kind of the work in progress that we're in and the stage that we're in. So they're ready for the next steps, and we are now working very diligently with our board colleagues and the administration to find dates and a plan for the next two months so that we can, um, review our progress, both with our staff internally and teachers, so they understand where we're going, and then bring it to the public. Um, so we, there will be dates to come very soon, we hope. Um, our next, uh, scheduled committee meeting is September twenty-first at four thirty. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, um, very much. And um, we'll move on now to operations with, uh, co-chairs Susan Cantor and Brian McDonald, who has.
I'm going to give the report this evening, and as always, I will chime, chime in. Um, number one, I'll start with an invitation to anyone to come to our meetings. As was pointed out earlier, um, a lot of this work happens in committee, and we have some very interested, um, members of the public that come to each of our meetings to see, um, the, the long-term planning that goes into, um, the decisions that the district makes in terms of our facilities. So our next meeting will be September thirteenth at eight AM on Zoom. And to preview even one further out, there's an October fourth at eight AM, so mark your calendars. Um, we met August ninth at seven thirty in the morning because we just love getting up for operations. Um, we began with an update on our two, uh, our twenty twenty-two, uh, referendum projects that are happening this summer, the Masonry work, uh, it was reported was going well. Um, and the, they are working on planning, uh, the fascia work that has been begun at Riverside and JP as it might, um, go into the school year, and that work will be completed off hours. And the goal is to complete all work by October. We have a roofing bid going out in September for work to be done, uh, next summer. And the committee also, uh, expressed a desire for the district to focus on, uh, future planning for solar and LED lighting, um, now that we have engaged a new architect. As always, we discussed sustainability, and other than the things in the referendum, um, we discussed, um, the timing of when we would hear for the trees for school, schools' grant application. We discussed green energy contracts for the district and continuing, um, the desire, um, of exploring options to bring, uh, car chargers, uh, to the school for our, uh, staff and parents, uh, to use in an affordable manner. So again, we welcome the public and look forward to seeing a big turnout at our next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Moving on to personnel with co-chairs, uh, Debbie Bronfeld and Mara Franceschi.
Thank you. Uh, the Personnel Committee met on August third. Mickey presented to the committee the positions of special education aides throughout the district. We discussed the communication position, which is on the agenda tonight. We also discussed the dates and schedule for the PHS principal search and interviews, and we also discussed other personnel issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Uh, moving on to policy with, uh, co-chairs Beth Baron and Jean Durbin.
Um, I'll take it. Thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We met on, um, August. Okay, thank you. We met on um August eighteenth at eight fifteen virtually. Our meetings are open to the public. The next meeting is September fifteenth at eight fifteen. Um, we discuss policies that are on for first and second read this evening, including updates to the student code of conduct. And a new policy on drones. We also address advocacy issues, um, including the superintendent's recommendation. And the board's desire to remove voting from our schools in order to gain two calendar days back. Because currently we have to close the schools uh for voting. That's it. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Jean, and uh we, you know, we do appreciate uh the efforts to move voting out of the schools. And it's not just the two calendar days, it's also we have to do a referendum for millions of dollars to increase um security in our schools. So uh it would be great if uh everything we did worked in tandem with everything, rode in the same direction. And uh I appreciate your efforts on that, the whole policy committee. And then finally, student achievement with uh co-chairs Betsy Baglia and Michelle Tuck Ponder. And I believe Michelle.
Delivering the report tonight, um, the Student Achievement Committee met on Friday, August eighteenth at eleven thirty. Um, it was a short meeting, well, kind of, the open part of the meeting was short for us. Um, our next meeting is Friday, September eighth, twenty twenty-three at eleven thirty. Um, and we invite the public also to come to our meetings. We talk about a lot of very interesting things. Um, the highlights were that meeting where we had field trip approvals. Um, for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four specifically for um our speech and debate team. And we had a number of debaters join us at the meeting, which was, which was great, because they offered a lot of clarity on how that whole. Organization or club um operates in terms of travel and, and competition. Um, so that was, that was great. It turns out that we are going to be not offering a blanket approval. But going um trip by trip, so we can get a better grasp on, on the cost of trips and, and what they're going to entail. We also um discussed the annual curriculum writing approvals. And also a new tool to help PPS communicate with community stakeholders as innovate K twelve. And we had a very lengthy um and engaged discussion about that as well. Um, and we adjourned to closed session soon thereafter um to talk about long-term facilities planning. And to um educate and inform um our fellow committee members. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Michelle. Um, any questions from anyone about that? No, uh, Jean?
Thanks. I just wanted to say thanks to the SAC committee for all their good work. And I had a question about the curriculum updates on the agenda and I got a copy of a presentation that was delivered to SAC. And so I just wanted to make a gentle request. Presentations that go to our committees. If they could be shared with the whole board, sorry, there's obviously a game on if you heard that in the background. Um, if they could be shared with the full board, um, I'd really appreciate it, like in the Friday update or something. Um, because it's just chock full of good information. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Jean. Um, anyone else? No, I just wanted to thank all the board members for their work over the summer. Again, we're unpaid volunteers and we sure donate a lot of time uh to the district, because we all care very much about it. Um, all right, moving on now to policies, first reading, uh, and I'll just go through it, stop me. Um, to slow me down. Uh, K one, first reading, K two, second reading. I just would like to thank uh everyone involved with amending um policy two, four, six, zero. Uh, I appreciate it. I know a lot of work went in to make sure that we can um. Accept emails from our parents seeking evaluations for their kids. So thank you to, for that. I'm moving on, L one resignations, L two retirements, L three appointments. L four transfers, reassignments, L five personnel items, L six leave of absence. L seven curriculum instruction, L eight substitute student placements, L nine student services. L ten six-period compensation, L eleven non-athletic EPS. Uh, moving on to M one NJ SIAA membership. Uh, M two is an action item. Can I get a motion, please? About uh Student Day Field Trips, Mara, second. Betsy? Uh, any discussion? No, okay.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Baglia.
Yes.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
De Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mark Franceschi.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Ryan McDonald.
Yes.
Oplak Ponder.
Great.
Uh, motion passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bolden. Moving on, M one, uh, M, I'm sorry, M three, adoption of pre-K twelve curriculum, twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, moving on then, students, but ends, student services, special education. And one, educational placement of pupils, and two, professional consulting services, and three, commission for the blind. And four, tuition for students, uh, children of staff for twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, then moving on to item oh-one, financial reports is an action item. Can I get a motion, please? Mara, second. Beth.
Uh, Daphne Kendall.
Abstain.
Betsy Baglia.
Yes.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
De Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mark Franceschi.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. Uh, moving on, uh, O two, fire evacuation drills, O three, registration travel agenda. Um, O four, shared service agreement for communication services, twenty-three, twenty-four. Can I get a motion? Jean, second. Michelle, uh, any discussion? Jean?
Yes, I'm, I'm voting no to this. I object to the contract because I think it's too expensive for a consultant. There are cheaper options as we've worked with them in the past. Seven hundred forty dollars a day for communications work is. Um, you know, not well reasoned, in my opinion. Also, the term day is not defined. It's not a defined term in the contract, so it's unclear to me what constitutes a day to warrant seven hundred and forty dollars. Um, it's then eight hundred dollars a day after a hundred and eight days of service, plus we pay for mileage. It's not a wise investment. The consultant is also on an internal email group for the Board of Ed, which I object to. Um, she isn't a consultant and not an employee and not an elected official. And when constituents and community members email the board, it should be the board, um, and, and not a consultant. Um. I'm not sure why she needs to be on internal communications. Um, and I just think the whole thing is not well reasoned or thought out, so I'm voting no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jean. Um, anyone else? No, okay, um, Mr. Bolden?
Uh, Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Betsy Baglia.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
De Bronfeld.
Yes.
Durbin.
No.
Mara Franceschi.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Ryan McDonald.
Yes.
Oplak Pond.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and I'm just on that, I think um Jean has a good point that the day is not defined. I think it would be in the district's interest to have that, um, have an amendment or have that defined in the contract. Thank you. Um, moving on, O five, joint transportation agreement. O six, twenty-three, twenty-four, non-public textbook. Um, then moving on. Oh, we're moving on now to our second public comment on any item that you would like to discuss or tell us about.
I don't see any hands raised at this time. Uh, Leonidas. Um.
Again.
Thank you. We unite.
Um, I'm guessing he took his hand down. Okay.
All right.
Right. All right, so now let's do uh the consent vote, uh, Q one, approved consent agenda items. Can I get a motion, please? Beth, second. Mara.
All right, Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Betsy Baglia.
Yes.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
De Bronfeld.
Yes.
Durbin.
Yes.
Mara Franceschi.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Ryan McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bolden. Um, so this is our last meet, no, it's not our last meeting before school starts. Um, we will like, if, if the principal search committee, which meets next week. Uh, decides on a candidate uh to be the next principal of Princeton High School, we will have a special meeting. Um, at the end of next week. I think Mr. Bolden is gonna notice it tomorrow and it's for August thirty-first at six. Is that correct? I don't remember what we agreed to. Is that what we, okay. Uh, and that meeting will only be held if uh there is. Um, a new principal to appoint. Uh, and with that, I'd like to thank everyone here for their work over the summer, uh, especially Rebecca. Um, and uh Maria, um, I'm sorry, not Maria, Lucy, um, Joy and Josh. For all your work in HR, I believe we had seventy-one new staff members who joined us at new employee, employee orientation. And we have zero openings uh for teachers and uh. We are still fortunate that people want to work here. We're unlike other districts, we're not paying signing bonuses. Um, some signing bonuses are five, ten thousand dollars. Uh, so I just want to thank everyone for their work. Uh, and with that, can I please get a motion to adjourn? Nobody wants to go? All right. Michelle, second. Betsy, all in favor? All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.